All right, we'll go ahead and get started with this Happy Halloween Study Session. How many people are in costume here today? Just a couple? All right. We'll start with the CHHS quarterly.
Do you want to know what my costume is?
No, I don't actually.
Okay.
CHHS Quarterly Performance Report Update with Ariel Anderson. And then just for everyone to know, the next up, we'll have the HMIS and then the CDBG eligibility requirement. So you'll just run us through all the stuff.
Great. Yes, thank you so much. Good morning. Just as an aside, at noon, I will need to be leaving because I'll head down to track. So not trying to be disrespectful, but just giving you all a heads up. So this morning is going to be quite jammed with a lot of information. So the first portion of what we'll be doing, Melissa primarily will be going over the quarterly performance reviews. This is for the first QPR, so the first quarter. Keep in mind that, you know, over a period of time, that is where those measurements become cumulative. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind as you're looking at the data. And, you know, we're doing more of a system performance overview, but all the projects and their specific measurements will also be provided to council. And we will make sure to upload what you're going to be seeing today in addition to those organizational-based performance measures up on the CHHS website. And we'll make sure to provide that link to you all as well. So, okay?
Okay. So first, just wanted to give a little bit of information on how this workflow looks like for when we are collecting this data. So this is what our HMIS team is doing, gathering all the information from the HHS OS funding, which you can see there. It contains a lot of different funding streams. So we're looking at a variety of funding streams into each one of these projects. It's referencing our City of Spokane five-year plan and those metrics, pulling the data from CMS, CMIS, looking at the contract, and then putting together a report that's shared with providers and then given some time to work with those sub-grantees to make sure that the data matches their data before the reports finalize. So it's something that the CMIS team has really been honing in on, working on this process. They've started doing some automations, which has made the process much more efficient. And so we're saving a lot of staff hours. I think it was about 40 staff hours a month on this new process, which is great. So big props to our CMIS team for some of the stuff that they are inputting so we can get this data on a regular basis in a quicker way. So by the time the reports are finalized, they've been reviewed by our team as well as the providers to make sure that we're matching. So the system performance measurements, you can look at the HUD SPM measures. These are the very high-level measures of what HUD is looking for when we are reporting these out. And then we do have some additional local measures as well. Like I said, it's a very high level. So we do have the link to the HUD System Performance Measures introductory guide if you really want to get into the weeds to see all the nitty-gritty of what's measured for each project. So starting with coordinated entry. So on the right-hand side, you see a little bit of a description of what that coordinated entry, what it is, what this project is. And on the left side is the overview of the results of how the referrals have been accepted, folks that have been able to contact, and then looking at the measurement of the percent of referrals with successful outcomes. So right now, we're a little bit over the minimum of 50%. And so this will continue to be tracked throughout the year. So this is looking at the singles, families, and young adult coordinated entry systems.
What does successful outcome mean?
The referral accepted and what is a successful outcome, that they're connected with a, the referrals made, they're connected with a project. So this is just kind of that front door, restarting the system. And then our emergency shelter continuous stay. So the only continuous stay shelter is Crosswalk?
And YWCA.
And the YWCA. So this is where folks are at a shelter but have a kind of dedicated better space that is there so they will stay even if they don't check in every night. So we don't have very many of those projects in our community. Like I said, it's just those two because of the specialized populations. So looking at those exits to permanent housing, right? I mean, the goal is 40%. Right now, we're at 38.8%. So getting close to that goal. And so that's where we're going to be watching over the next year for that cumulative percentages. Emergency shelter night by night. So this is the drop-in shelters, where you need to be there every night to check in. And so looking at the return to homelessness and the exits to permanent housing, right now, we're lower on our returns to homelessness at 14%, not quite hitting the minimum for exits to permanent housing, but that will be something we continue to look out over the next year. Diversion. So diversion is a very client-driven approach. It's to allow flexible funding for providers to get creative with the goal of keeping someone out of a shelter. So it can be a lot of different things. Is it, can you stay with your grandma for a couple weeks or permanently if we help with a power bill or something? So it's just, how do we think creative to get folks into situations with a lot of times of natural supports, but sometimes they just need a little bit additional funding to help them get there with the goal of just so you never have to enter the shelter system? Prevention. So these services are a lot like what are offered in rapid rehousing. And so we, right now, it's, you know, the minimum with the exits to permanent housing, not quite there. It's definitely something we want to keep an eye on for this next year, but that's, again, just a lot of creative, flexible funding to get folks into housing without having to really enter the crisis system. Permanent supportive housing, that's the, you know, long-term in the name, permanent. So it's subsidy, rental subsidy, and then supportive services. The supportive services offered with permanent supportive housing are completely voluntary. So if folks are in this program and do not take advantage of the supportive services, that does not disrupt their placement in these programs. And you do have to have a head of household member that is either disabled or chronically homeless. And so it does have, you know, requirements to be in those programs. But the goal is, is that if someone gets in those programs, they could theoretically spend their, you know, their entire life staying in the program. There is a move-on strategy, you know, because some folks, after they've been in permanent supportive housing, are ready to move on to a different option. And so providers work with them to find out what that next option will look like and how to make sure that they're successful in it. Rapid rehousing is probably the project in our system that we see the most of. This is what a lot of the dollars are going to with, you know, rapidly trying to get someone into, out of the crisis system into a housing situation. So the services that can be provided, housing identification, so helping find those housing options, the financial assistance to move them in, deposits, arrears, or case management services, to give them the services to help them be successful.
On your last slide, the permanent supportive housing, you said this requires that somebody, the head of household, either be disabled or chronically homeless. Did I hear that?
So under the HUD's definition of chronically homeless, it includes that verifiable disability. So it's, you know, to be chronically homeless presumes that you're going to have that disability and then that length of homelessness that's required.
And that was my question. Is that a HUD requirement or is that an US thing?
That is a HUD requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
Street outreach is, you know, working with folks that are not accessing usually any other services and just trying to make that connection with them to help get them connected into our system. And so we're seeing a lot of street outreach teams right now, you know, and we'll be working with them closely when we're doing the point-in-time count to help identify where those encampments are. They have relationships with folks so we can really have a good or as good as possible point-in-time count in connecting with folks. Supportive services are services that are provided to people who are connected to programs, who could be sheltered or unsheltered. But it's a little bit different than the street outreach. So it's, we do get sometimes in the weeds of what is street outreach, what is supportive services only. So it's, with the goal of, all the goals of these interventions are to get folks into a permanent solution and to decrease the returns to homelessness. And so that is the SPM measures of exits to permanent housing. That's really the goal overall of each one of our interventions, from street outreach to permanent supportive housing. And then again, transitional housing is a longer-term support, but it is still a temporary. So we see that a lot, especially with domestic violence work. They have some of the transitional housing as well as the youth and young adult, the YHDP projects are the two populations that really have the transitional housing that's subsidized by HUD. And so the quarterly performance reporting will be coming quarterly to council to give a presentation. Our next one will be in January 2025. I think as we do these future reports, we'll start to be able to see those trends and any emerging issues that are coming out in the data. So this is kind of just the first one. The second one, we'll see, have there been any changes? Are we still seeing things that aren't, you know, we're not expecting everything to be at the minimums that we want, even in the second quarter. That's more of the third, you know, is where we really start talking about like, what do we need to do to get those numbers to where we need them to be? But it's just a way to keep an eye on it. You know, feedback of what additional information would be counsel from council in these future updates, and then these will be shared on the CHHS website. Yeah.
I guess I'm curious, why just that narrow, why one quarter? Why not, we have years and years and years and years of data. Why are we not taking into account all of that and doing some comparisons and really digging into this data?
We can. I mean, we do have that data, but this is also how we report out to HUD. So we do have to make quarterly reports to HUD, but, you know...
I mean, not having a reference to compare those two doesn't really do a whole lot of good. You know, what's the quarter before? How did we do year-to-date? I mean, what's all the information we need?
Sure. So I do want to caution council in terms of looking back from 2020 during pandemic time to now. I don't think that that would give a good baseline for us to work from, primarily because it was a chaotic time. And I think that's part of the problem overall with the, you know, the funding cycle from 2019 to 2024, right? We had all these hopes and dreams and, you know, doing these QPRs and then looking at the funding and the performance over a course of a year and then making that determination as a community, boy, do we need to kind of rethink how we're currently funding some of these projects. We're happy to do that. That being said, one of the things that I had promised coming into this position was that we would take those new contracts and we would be reporting out on a regular cadence, ergo, the, you know, the first QPR.
Well, can I just follow up real fast? So I'll just say, I mean, we have spent an obscene amount of money while I've been on this council. We have had hardly any feedback data-wise that's relevant. We're making all kinds of commitments on future spending with organizations who have not proven to actually provide results. And now you're saying we should just ignore all of it?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that we ignore it, but what I am saying is that this at least, this gives us a good baseline. I think that basing performance during a time which people were, we had a shutdown and in addition to that where folks, you know, you couldn't, there was no movement happening within the housing, the limited housing stock that we have, and then you had this massive increase of rents. You know, just looking at it purely from some of these, you know, from a rapid rehousing perspective, that becomes very difficult to compare now to 2021. I don't think that that is, you know, I don't think that that's a good comparison. Now, can we do that? Sure, we can. I mean, we do have the data, to your point.
You can at least show 22, 23, 24. I mean, I think there's lots of relevant data within those years.
Sure.
So I'll just leave it there. I mean, if you guys don't want to share the data, that's fine.
No.
But I think it's critical that we have that comparison because if we're going to be spending millions more, including general fund dollars, including $15.90, including money that in the past, we have never been willing to use for homelessness, and suddenly now we are, well, we need data.
100%, which is, I hope that by doing this, right, and setting up on a regular basis, that that is showing a commitment to that and to that transparency. So, you know, I can't go back and fix, you know, the past.
No, but you can go back and get and show.
100, yes, I can. I think that there needs to be some more, you know, some discussion around what that would look like, but for right now, these are the most current contracts and this is what we are committed to moving forward. Also happy to satisfy that request as well.
Yeah, I would say, I hear what you're saying on that. And if we presented the data and it's like, hey, remember what 2021 was like, I think that's a fair thing to say, but I think it is important for us to see those numbers because there were other things that were happening in those times, things that the city had to grapple with that they didn't have to grapple with before 2019, right? The Boise decision, 2021, we get the Blake decision. There are other things that are happening in that time that I think are relevant for us, even knowing like COVID was happening at the same time, but there was a lot of, you know, state or regional decisions that were made as well that affected us. And so, you know, going back to, you know, potentially, and again, not trying to throw a bunch of work on you, but going back to like 2016, when it was like a more fairly normal time in the progress. And then, you know, 2019, again, we're seeing some decisions. 2020, obviously, the world goes crazy. 21, we get the Blake decision. And we can see and we can say, hey, we think we can attribute this to this potential cause.
Sure.
I think that's all good stuff for us to take a look at because, again, it's, as Councilmember Cathcart was saying, I think it's going to be important for us to know as we're making decisions going forward, so.
Great, and happy to do that. I mean, I think having a conversation about what that would look like would be helpful so that we don't just go out and, you know, start pulling stuff that it may not be relevant or something that you may not want. Yeah, I mean, the data, I want to be very clear, the data is there, right? So, and we are absolutely happy to share whatever it is that you all would like, so.
And can I ask one follow-up on one of the data points? Just to make sure I'm understanding what you're presenting. Could you go back to the night-by-night real quick? The, like, emergency night-by-night, just as an example? So on that, so we're saying exits from emergency night-by-night sheltering between these three months was 30, almost 38% exited from emergency sheltering into permanent housing? Am I reading that correct?
Yes.
And then we're saying that only 15% returned to homelessness?
Yeah.
I mean, we've had hundreds of people in night-by-night sheltering. And so I'm just trying to understand, have we actually housed that many people in three months?
So again, I think you have to remember, this is a very small moment in time, right? I mean, it's a 90-day time period. So you're looking at the overall numbers are quite, you know, they're going to be smaller than, let's say, if we went back to 2020. So, yeah, I mean, I don't think that that is atypical, but I mean, if you want us to do a deeper dive on that, I think too, when you get those, the other performance reports specifically for, you know, for each agency that's doing ES, you should be able to readily tell if something is off. But I don't think, I don't think anything is off, but...
Anything else on the quarterly report? Anyone online? Can't see online.
Yes, Councilmember Klitschke.
Oh, Councilmember Klitschke.
Hi, thanks for all that data. I think if you're asking one thing that might be helpful for council members is just to kind of see the numbers of people in different situations over time. If it's a one-year period or a 90-day period, but kind of an ongoing measure. It's, I think it's great that we're putting resources into keeping people from entering the shelter system at all. I think that's the best point to intervene. But I know it's also really difficult to have any numbers on how many people are unstably housed and where do we keep track of those folks or even find out about points where we can intervene? I don't know if there's a way to get more data on those situations and the kind of turning points to when they end up in the shelter system, when they end up housed. If we could have a visual that allows us to easily see those numbers, I think we could track the scale of the problem and what kind of success we're having.
Yeah, thank you for that. I would think that NECA, that Jenna Rae, might actually be a good connection for that because they've done so much work up there to track exactly something like this. So I can connect with her and see what's out there. So thank you for your feedback, Councilmember.
All right. With that, I think we can move on to the HMIS.
So HMIS is our local management information system used by the COC. So it's a database that collects data and the services to the individuals. And so, you know, it's a huge, a huge database that our team runs. The federal mandate is that every COC has an HMIS software that complies with HUD data collection. And then our department is the HMIS lead for the COC WA 502, which is what HUD calls us, City of Spokane, Spokane County. In our community, we use it as a system tool. So it helps with decision-making, it's coordination between the service providers and planning because of the data that we can pull out of HMIS. And right now, there's over 112,000 clients that are in HMIS, so individual client accounts. I just want to be careful that that does not mean there's currently 112,000 people homeless in Spokane County. There is about a 20% error rate because of duplicated clients. There are folks who are in HMIS that are homeless, or not homeless, anonymous for safety reasons, so domestic violence survivors. So if people are anonymous, there is a good chance that they are duplicated. And this is also all-time client accounts, not at, just at this time.
What was the beginning date on that, the beginning year?
So our HMIS has been active for about 16 years?
So 112,000 in 16 years, roughly 20% duplication rate?
Yeah. Right now, we have about 468 users and over, spread over 41 agencies. And so it is supposed to be a regional, you know, approach where folks can do that coordination. The HMIS team, they are doing a lot of data cleanup, so deduplicating accounts to try to make sure that we have as few duplicated individuals there is possible and then getting rid of folks who have access that are no longer with an agency or no longer, you know, don't need access anymore. So going through and making sure that we're keeping that clean because we do want to make sure that the access to the system is as secure as possible.
And so Amanda is going to do a little bit of a demonstration of what HMIS looks like using our training platform. So it's no actual individuals or data that we're sharing, it's just our training to give you an idea.
Thank you. Good morning. So the software that we use is called ClientTrack and it is provided by Acovia. Acovia is our vendor. Like I said, we have been with them for about 16 years. How HMIS is set up, the way the data is collected, all of that is prescribed by HUD. HUD outlines the information that we're meant to collect, how we're meant to collect it, on who. For example, name, we're meant to collect it for every single person, but income only for adults and heads of households. So that's the kind of level that we receive and our vendor takes care of making sure those specifications are up to date on our account. Oh, got it, one. So when you first log into ClientTrack, this is what our case managers see, what our day-to-day users see. This is sort of their home landing page. Where they do spend the majority of their time is actually in the client, what we call workspaces. So the process truly begins when the case manager is interacting with the client, they're doing all sorts of intake paperwork, having a conversation with them, determining what's the best next step for them, what is their housing plan, their case management plan. And throughout all of that, we're completing an intake into HMIS. An intake is what we call the paperwork, sort of like when you go to the doctor's office and you have this whole big stack of paper that you need to sign, this is the same thing. I do think it's important to point out that before anyone's information can be entered into HMIS, they have to consent that their personally identifiable information can be in HMIS. So we are what's considered an opt-in state, the entirety of Washington State and all the COCs in Washington, we require you to opt in. So you have to sign a consent form first before any PII or personally identifiable information can be entered into HMIS. All other states, typically you opt out of it.
That's a quick question on that. So the providers are required to input into HMIS, correct?
The providers who receive our contracts, yes.
Okay. But if, but if their client simply says they don't want to be a part of it, then they don't have to be input?
They don't enter their personally identifiable information. So name, social security number, date of birth, that's not entered, but we do still collect the rest of the information, like barriers, income, when you start the project, when you leave.
Got it. No, that's great. Thank you.
So the main landing page is the client's dashboard. Up here at the top, we have some of their basic demographic information. Following that, we have who could be their most active case manager assigned. In this case, it's me. Like I said, this is a test client that I created so that we could walk through all of this together. But you could see, perhaps we have an active case manager that you could reach out to, to get more information or to see what's going on with that client. Oop, lost my mouse, there we go. And then you see their enrollments. Now, enrollments are what we call the program that clients are enrolled into. Like you can see here, in the past, they've been in the singles coordinated entry and they left from there to an emergency shelter. They've been at the House of Charity. They were engaged through street outreach with SNAP and Frontier Behavioral Health. They previously stayed at track for a couple of days. And so this is part of telling their, the client's story and how they've accessed our services. HMIS is really meant to be a place to gather the information on the characteristics of those who are experiencing homelessness, their demographics, as well as their patterns of homelessness and the services that they are accessing. Further down, we also have referrals. So this is where we can track if any referral has been sent out from coordinated entry, for example, for housing. So we can see that while they were enrolled in coordinated entry, there was a referral replaced for rapid rehousing, but unfortunately, it was unsuccessful because they were unable to contact the client. We can also see their services that were added as part of these enrollments. Now, in the client information, we do also have a case notes section where case managers can come in and add different notes. For example, this was part of the street outreach enrollment. And this is an additional part of what we use as communication tool for, as a continuum, is so that all the different case managers that are working together with this client can share information back and forth to coordinate their care. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, really quickly, so I guess in the case of, this might be a little, I guess, granular, but like the CHAZ Street Outreach Team, so, you know, are they using like MyChart or Athena or another platform when they're doing their outreach? Are the two systems talking to each other or is there a way to kind of, an easy way to sort of fold that into this data?
The two systems are separate. So a lot of our providers... So a lot of our providers do double entry, and no, the systems aren't linked. There's large security concerns with doing something like that. We do also provide the ability to store documents in our HMIS, in the, using a document check. So if the client, for example, could potentially lose their social security card or their driver's license, which are these sort of core documents that you need for the client to be in, for them to obtain housing, we do have the ability to store them here in HMIS and download them later as needed for them to be able to obtain a physical copy later. Okay. So I'm gonna, next, I'm just gonna walk you through what an intake looks like for our street outreach projects. Now, the kinds of questions that are asked depends on the project type, and HUD does enumerate that quite clearly. Our continuum also has outlined some additional questions that we ask, for example, for all youth and young adults, although it's not required by HUD, we do ask what their sexual orientation is. So the very first step in the intake, this client has been here before, right? They've had a previous account in HMIS. If this wasn't the case, you'd be entering all of this for the very first time, you'd be entering their name, their social security number, their date of birth. But since the client's been here already, it's just a matter of confirming if this information is still accurate. This is the basics of the demographic information that we collect, including race, gender, date The next page is family members. So if there's more than one client enrolled, or more than one client that's, could potentially be enrolled in the program, this is where you add the different family members. And this is where you actually select the program that the client is participating in. Now, I'm currently in as the City of Spokane, so I have quite a large number of programs, but all the organizations are limited to only seeing their projects. I was not joking with the large number. So in this case, it's the SNAP Street Outreach Project that's funded through HSG. We typically name all of our projects this way. The first portion is the organization, and then the project type, and then some other The start date for street outreach is the day that you first had contact with the client, but it varies between the project types. So for rapid rehousing, it's the first day that they were able to access services or housing through that. For an emergency shelter, it's the first night they stayed there. So we have a lot of different parameters depending on the project type. This is the next piece of information that all programs collect, is called a universal data assessment, in what HUD, in HUD standards, it's the UDEs or the universal data elements. And that includes disabling condition, their enrollment COC, which for everyone is WA502, and their prior living situation. Now, these questions, as was mentioned earlier during our presentation, have to do with considering, with determining if someone is considered chronically homeless, and if they therefore meet the definition and the requirements of different projects such as PSH, or permanent supportive housing. We do also ask of most of all of our clients if they are covered by health insurance, and then if they are, which type. If you say yes, if the client does have a disabling condition, we do ask what type, and we ask everything from if they have some sort of substance use disorder, a chronic health condition, or a physical disability.
So I just, I just do want to add, too, that as somebody is going through this process with an individual, you know, this is really, and ought to be seen, and it is used by the folks on the direct line as a way to engage with somebody in a very meaningful and authentic way. So when you're asking somebody whether or not, and this is just an example, if they have HIV, and they indicate yes, that is a red flag for that direct service worker to ask them, oh, gosh, are you plugged into SRHD? Because those are, that is the, the agency, or SAN, that administers HAPWA. Okay? So, so as we're moving through, I just want to be very mindful of the fact that these are very intrusive questions, and that we take great care in our community to make sure that there is a reason behind asking those, and that we are prepared to connect folks to those resources needed depending on how they answer to some of these questions.
On that note, does SRHD enter into HMIS?
They do.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. There, it's kind of gone back and forth over the last few years, and so they don't, you know, they don't directly enter HAPWA data in there yet, or, you know, they used to, and then COVID happened. But they do have access to, to ClientTrack, so they can also leverage coordinated entry services as well.
And so individuals that are participating in treatment services, for example, if they're part of the, the system, that might be able to track them within the HMIS data?
It is all anonymous. So, much like if somebody is fleeing, that individual is going to be made anonymous in, in ClientTrack if they answer positively to the HIV status.
And when somebody says, I've been the victim of domestic violence, do we just take their word for it? Is there any verification, or is it just, okay?
Oh, yeah, there is no, we're not asking for, for verification, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. It is all self-reported, but if, at this point, for example, you don't know that the client is yet fleeing domestic violence, that hasn't come up in this conversation that you're having with the client, but they do answer yes, we do ask follow-up questions, like if you're currently fleeing. And this is a point where if the client is not yet anonymous, it is within our HMIS policies and procedures that you submit an issue and that we de-identify the client so that they are anonymous in the system. So this could be a trigger for that kind of question as well. We do also ask questions related to income, if the client has any income or non-cash benefits. And if the response is yes, there are different types, and we are meant to have an amount. And then this is how we track if someone perhaps has an increase in income, which is one of the metrics that HUD and our continuum looks like to see for the success of how we're working with our clients.
So if, for example, somebody is solely getting social security benefits, and their social security benefit increases, is that counted as a successful metric?
It is a success, yes, sir.
Okay.
As you can see, it's sort of broken down to, first, we have to find the client, in this case, I already had it pulled up. But we find the client, we go over their basic information, and then we ask some sort of universal assessment questions, like where were you before this? Do you have a disabling condition? And then there are more specific questions that are asked, depending on the funding source and the requirements that HUD has. Any additional questions?
And maybe this isn't, again, just kind of learning more about the system, the appropriate place, but questions around, you know, mental health, history, you know, substance abuse. I mean, just, again, kind of mirroring, I think, other healthcare systems when you go and ask about, you know, suicidal ideation, a lot of questions, I think, to try and build more understanding of services and referrals and treatment.
So when we get to the barriers page, and barriers are something that we ask of most of our clients, that's what that page is called, and it does include mental health, to see if the client has any sort of mental health disorder, substance use, alcohol, chronic health condition. So those questions are all included. Now, they're not overly detailed, we don't ask what type of mental health, but we do ask if it is there at all, if you have any sort of condition like that.
Anything else on HMIS?
Just, I guess, one thing to piggyback off of, Councilor Cathcart's comment about the Health District at the last Regional Homeless Meeting, we did discuss publishing a monthly dashboard that's going to be pulling from some of this data with the county and valley as well, and working on it in a local agreement, and that'll be publicly available.
All right. Thank you for all that information, walking us through that. Our last item for today is the 2025-29 Consolidated Plan and CDBG Funding.
Good morning. Okay, so this is kind of a follow-up to what we talked about in August. And I did try to incorporate some of the questions that you'd all asked me back then and get that information in here as well, but I want to run through some of the data that came out of our community survey, and some of the priorities that the community identified, not only through those survey results, but also through in-person consultations and public feedback sessions that we conducted over the last several months. The CDBG national objectives, those are the items that actually define what eligibility of a project means. And then I do want to make sure that you're all aware of the CDBG request for proposals that'll open up in November as well, so that you can share that with constituents. And we're going to talk about a tough topic then at the end, and that's our CDBG timeliness with HUD. This is just a reminder of what we covered back in August, the consolidated plan that we've been working on since, oh, gosh, April, May. It's a five-year plan, we're required by HUD to produce this. It assists the city in determining how we're going to spend those formula grant funds that we receive on a yearly basis. And it outlines the strategies to address the needs that have been identified by the community. So the community, there's four areas that we look at, and the needs, so four categories of needs that we're looking at, public services and facilities, we've got housing and homelessness, community and economic development, infrastructure, and enhancements. And so the survey, and the consultations, and the public feedback sessions that we host, they all cover those four different areas. Okay. And then a formula grant. So you've heard it referred to as entitlement. I've kind of shifted us away from that a little bit because we're not actually entitled to it. We get it because of these other things up here, like our levels of poverty, our population size, different demographic and economic data. And if we fail to meet HUD's requirements, we don't get it again. So I want to, I want to be clear that it is a formula grant. Our program year is July 1 through June 30, and the three funding sources that are considered formula grants that are covered under this consolidated plan are home, ESG, and the CDBG. Now, we're going to shift into some new information, and these are some of the results from those surveys that we've been conducting over the last, well, since June 1. So the survey opened June 1, we closed it October 11, and we had something like 739 folks respond to it. Then we also hosted the public feedback sessions, and then I think 14 or 15 private consultations with small groups. These are organizations that HUD asks us to reach out to specifically. What's interesting about this is there's about 84% of the respondents are residents of the City of Spokane. We should have broken it down just a little bit different, but instead, we did ask, do you reside and work? And then, then just the, do you reside in Spokane? So it's a total of about 84 that responded that lived here. We had 4% other, because anyone could basically click the button and take it. Yeah.
So is this saying that 52% of Spokane lives here but works outside of Spokane?
Well, that's how they answered it.
Okay.
Of these, what, 739 folks? We did ask public service needs, that's one of those categories, and we did see some surprises here, honestly, compared to the last five-year plan that we put out. So mental health services in the last five-year plan, it was a priority for the community. It was identified as a high need, but it was not the number-one high need. In this particular survey, 49% of the respondents identified it as one of their top three. And so that was a shift, that was a shift from the last five-year plan. Affordable childcare also came up more in this plan than it had, or in this survey than it had in the previous five-year plan that we had. Homeless services, about the same. Addiction treatment services rose a little bit. Supportive services for vulnerable populations, still a top priority, but it did fall just a little bit from previous plans. I want to stress something. We do ask about homeless services and homeless response in the consolidated plan because we have about $270,000 of these formula grants that can serve homelessness or homeless services. And so keep in mind that while you're going to see that replicated in our data, we have a very little pot of money in these formula grants that directly goes to that. Now, we have quite a bit of other money that comes through the HHOS portfolios that can Critical community development needs in Spokane. This is not going to be a surprise to most, most of you, I'm sure. I mean, I would imagine that you hear about sidewalks, streetlights, other neighborhood improvements. Again, improved childcare facilities came up pretty high. Help for nonprofits, so identifying loan-grant opportunities or capacity building. We are seeking guidance from HUD on how we could offer capacity building funding to our nonprofits. We're also looking at how we could do it for the for-profit on some of the economic development sides as well. It's very specific, and it looks like it might be very restrictive, and that's why we really want to have HUD's guidance on that before we go out to the RFP. The more improved parks, more and/or improved community centers also. These are the top five. Housing needs, no surprises here, folks. Number one, affordable rental housing. 62% of the respondents of this survey identified that in one of their top three. No surprise. Affordable home ownership opportunities, no surprises. Transitional housing for people moving from homelessness, housing repair and rehabilitation for low to moderate, and emergency shelters for persons experiencing homelessness. Like, this is, there's no surprises here. Critical economic development needs in Spokane. Job training programs, workforce development programs, more employment opportunities, low-cost loans for small startup businesses and nonprofits, grants for small businesses. So these were the top five identified out of that. So these drive the goals. And in some cases, these goals write themselves, right? Because we know in affordable housing that we need to increase and preserve the stock of affordable housing. Yeah.
So the options that people are selecting in this survey, are those, again, Spokane-generated or like HUD-generated?
They are HUD-generated.
Okay, thank you.
Because we try to utilize as much of what we can actually do in the survey so people aren't choosing things we can't fund.
Right.
Yeah. So goal one, increase access to essential services for low and moderate-income households and neighborhoods in the City of Spokane. I want to point out that low and moderate-income households piece, because this is some of the only funding that we have that we can actually address up to that 80% AMI. Most of our, our funding tends to focus on like that 30% AMI or less because of the homeless services component of it. And so this, I do want to focus on that low in income. And we've been doing a lot of collaboration with the county, and in some of the county's work, they're actually going to limit some of the funding that they're issuing to those agencies or projects that aren't receiving homeless funding, so that we can address that gap to that 80%. So again, you'll see the mental health services, childcare services. So the smaller print items on this are the priorities that were identified by the, the community, right? Yes.
When you say "community," you mean a couple dozen providers that are identified by HUD, correct?
Actually, this focuses more on the survey results from the community than it does on the service providers. The service providers were pretty strong in our public feedback sessions, but then not so much in that survey.
And so how, why did we get that out then to the community?
So we published that survey every place we could. It was, we went to community events, and we had tabling, we went to different organizations, we provided them with this QR code, we had it noted on the news, we had it published, everywhere we could get it, we had it.
And, and with that, how much response did we get?
About 739.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the, so the percentages we saw up here are just reflective of the 739 community members, not necessarily the providers?
Correct.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Yes. Now, where you're going to see the public feedback sessions and the private consultations come into play are going to be in the development of the priorities, and I'll show you why. So with the mental health, childcare... So with the mental health, childcare services, addiction treatment services, supportive services, that all lines up really pretty tightly with what you saw as the top for the survey. Capacity building for nonprofits, though, that one bumps up just a little bit in conversations with the organizations for the simple fact that they would like to be able to do more, but they don't know how. This is where, if we can meet that HUD definition for capacity building, we can provide them with that support to develop the capacity to run larger projects to meet more people. So that's one of those things that did bump up through the, the rest of the public engagement process. Neighborhood improvements, more improved childcare facilities, help for nonprofits. Again, that help for nonprofits, facility improvements, that's one that bumps up a little bit because we do hear about those. Yes.
What's the total amount that we're getting?
In CDBG, we're getting three, roughly $3,046,000. But some of this can be covered in home. And then like the homeless piece and the homeless services piece, we're really limited. It's at 270,000 roughly. Home, we get roughly like 1.3 to 1.4 million. So that allows us to look more at the new construction, affordable housing, multifamily, rehab, those sorts of things that help preserve and create affordable housing options.
I guess I would just say, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's listed up here, and I don't know what the, in the end, how many things we're going to be trying to do, but honestly, I think it should be one, two, maybe three things max, and nothing else. And stop spreading the peanut butter, focus on something, be transformational, get it done. That's just my thought on, on this and 1590 and a whole lot of things. I just don't think we're thinking big enough sometimes.
And I think that's great feedback, because we look at this too, and we're like, the money is so, there's so little of it. So absolutely, we're in agreement with that. If we could identify even more finely what we could do. However, if we do too fine, and it's not in this plan, then we can't fund it for five years without a substantial amendment to the consolidated plan, which is a, it's a process in itself. So what we've typically done has gone a little bit broader, so that then during those RFP cycles where we're sitting down with our affordable housing committee or our human services committee, and we're defining the RFP priorities, we can pick and choose which ones we're going to focus on for that funding cycle. Yeah. The affordable housing, I want to talk about the, the priorities there. Rental housing, of course, comes up, homeownership. But you'll notice transitional housing comes just a little bit below that housing repair and rehabilitation. And that has to do with the fact that we're trying, one of the goals of this funding is to help low and moderate-income folks be able to age in place, as well as have options for new housing or, or transitional housing if they need to shift into, say, like a care facility or something like that. And so through our meetings with organizations and the public feedback sessions, that ability to fund housing repair and rehabilitation was pretty high. Now, it didn't necessarily come up in the survey results. It came up as like number four versus like number, I think we have it as number three. So it wasn't much of a shift, but we did bump it ahead of the transitional housing for the simple fact that we just don't have enough funding to do transitional housing and meet qualifications for HUD with these funding sources. Yes.
So I guess the question then, again, with such limited amount of money in this pot, why, why focus on housing when housing is such a hugely expensive thing, and we have a very specific pot of money supposed to be dedicated to housing, although that's not happening so much anymore? But with 1590, and so why, why not really focus in on 1590, which can really emphasize the housing and use this for a myriad of other things?
That's a good, great question. I can only tell you that on this HUD piece, we have to use some of it for housing. So being able to, and with the home, it's really focused on the acquisition, new construction. So we know we have to use at least that 1.4 million probably there.
And the home piece, yeah, but, but just that base CDBG portion, the 3.4, right? That's outside of the home? Or does that include the home?
The 3 million. That is outside of home. And with the CDBG, there's pots that have to go to certain places. And so you can't use the whole thing just for public services. We're limited to only 15% going public services. So we do have to like fit into all of these restrictions. Where we can use the CDBG money, and maybe we can't use 1590, or we can't use the home, is in the multifamily housing rehab area where they need roofs, or they need windows, or they need these things to bring these buildings up to code, and they've got these, you know, they've got like 54 tenants. That's where some of this money can come into play that maybe some of the other funding sources can't. So we do want to make sure that we have it open for that kind of activity.
Could you give me just a, whatever the guidance is you're using that, you know, shows the 15%, things like that, the different categories?
Oh, yeah. So that's out of HUD, and I can, we can send that to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. And then goal four, create and expand economic development opportunities. The money here will be pretty limited, but we do have some micro enterprise funding that we were able to issue during this year. So we're seeing some of those organizations be able to go out and develop other organizations. They're small, right? So these are organizations that are five or fewer. But anything that we can kind of do to generate some of that capacity for small organizations to be able to have their own businesses, we want to be able to support it if we can.
I, I have a question on this for goals and priorities. When we're talking about mental health services, one of the things I hear from community and service providers all the time is that we just don't have enough workers, right? I hear that quite a bit. There's not enough people working in the mental health space. Is there any program for us to help recruit people from other areas where, you know, we could do something like, you know, insert dollar amount here that we will incentivize toward your student loan payment if you decide to settle in the city of Spokane and stay here and working in this space for five years or so, you know, here's a $15,000 bonus or $15,000. And again, just spitballing numbers here, it doesn't have to be that number. But something along those lines to help incentivize workers to choose Spokane versus maybe going to Seattle or Coeur d'Alene or something like that to choose Spokane. Can we do something like that with the money?
We wouldn't be able to do it with this funding source, but that's not to say that the city might not have other funding sources that you all could look at to, for that. I mean, it's a great idea. It's just HUD limits what we can do with this money.
But with the workforce development options, I feel like there could be a...
That was...
So the workforce development is very focused more like on the training of the, the employees and on that sort of service than it is like being able to offer an incentive. So cash incentives, HUD's not big on that. I'll, I'll put that one out there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just really quickly on the behavioral health workforce piece, a lot of it is onerous requirements around licensing and apprenticeship and hours. So I think there is a way, I know there's been some efforts at the state level, like your, what is it, 4,000 hours of supervision with someone that has their license, how to maybe loosen some of that and get more folks out in the field. But yeah, I love the idea of trying to get those incentives for folks here.
Okay, so now I'm going to really shift to the community development block grant, so the CDBG, and try and answer some of the questions you all had for us back in August. Again, eligible activities, public improvements, public facilities, services, rehabilitation, economic development. As I said, $3,046,000 is our anticipated amount for program year 2025, based off of what we received for 2024. HUD can shift that. They can shift it 10% either up or down, and they have shifted it in the past, so we always say this is estimated. The national objectives define what's an, what is an eligible activity. So benefit to low and moderate-income persons. It needs to fit one of these. It needs to be like the client, the beneficiaries have to be within an area that's looked at as low mod income, or it has to be a limited clientele that meets that low mod income requirement. It has to be a housing, and the housing then has restrictions on how many people are there, how many have to qualify with 51% qualifying as low mod income. And then the jobs piece of it. Prevention and elimination of slums and blights. There's an area basis for this and a spot basis for this. One of the, I'll get to it. I'll, I'll show you. And then urgent needs, serious immediate threat to health and wellness, or welfare. These are like big events, things where you get like a declaration of disaster or emergency or something like that. So we don't see very many of those, just so you're aware of that. So the national objective, if you're looking at the low mod area benefit, all residents of the service, so the project that you do must benefit all residents of a service area. You have to define the service area, or let me rephrase that. The provider has to define the service area. The service area must meet the HUD qualification. They have a list, I won't say a list, they have a map that we have to follow to determine whether or not a, a particular project is going to fall within a eligible area. And then primarily residential, and at least 51% of the residents must meet that low moderate income household designation. We see a lot of projects in this fall under the LMA. Here are some examples of projects that have met that low moderate area requirement. CDBG national objective for limited clientele is a little bit different. So it's a, 51% of the participants of the project must be low moderate income persons, and it's limited to low moderate income persons only. And the nature and location indicate that it will be a low moderate benefit. And so we do have a project right now, our CHAZ dental voucher project that was funded, that one falls under this. And then housing, so many requirements. To meet the housing objective, it has to be occupied by low mod household. If it's one unit, the whole household, right, is low mod income. If, at least one unit of a duplex has to qualify, 51% of three-plus units must qualify. Homeowner unit rehab, rental acquisition and rehab, home buyer assistance. So these are some of the activities that we actually do use a lot of our CDBG funds for. And then jobs. So create and retain permanent jobs, and 51% of the jobs created retained must be available to low mod income persons with those other qualifications. Typical activities, these are the things that we're looking into how we could actually offer them with, in Spokane with our money and stay in HUD compliance. Slum and blight. One word of caution on the slum and blight. If it's an area basis, it can lower property values in the area, which is why most of our neighborhoods have been resistant to being declared a, a blight area or a slum area, right? Makes total sense. And the, the activities for a, for the spotlight are limited to acquisition, clearance of a structure relocation, the historic preservation remediation, and then the building rehab. Yeah.
So I've, I've really been thinking a lot about this, and, and I'll probably be putting some ideas forward as we get a little closer. But I really think, thinking about code enforcement and blight and things like that, and, you know, we can get past, I think, some of the terminology and whatnot if we have to, if we can get resources. But there's, I think, ways that we could bring on, you know, additional code enforcement, and maybe they're focused in certain census tracts, while other code enforcement officers can maybe focus in other areas. And that way, we can sort of expand that, that capacity and that force. It also applies, I, I think, maybe, hopefully, to dealing with some of the issues we have with abandoned, you know, vehicles and things. There might be an opportunity there. And so I really think just that, that's an area that we should really try to focus in on and see how we can expand on that.
Along that same lines, we've been having conversations with code enforcement and with SNAP, because they run our single-family rehab minor home repair program right now that's CDBG-funded, and how we can collaborate with them so that if a code enforcement comes in, those referrals can get to SNAP so that the homeowner can maybe address the issue. So we are starting those conversations. We don't have any MOUs or anything totally defined, but yeah, we're looking at that as well.
Great.
Yeah. And then the urgent need, like, if, if we were hit by a big forest fire, which is not totally outside the realm of possibility, this might be a funding source that we could draw on in that event. We're unlikely to get a hurricane, but those are the kind of big things that this, this would, and this doesn't go out to competitive RFP. So if it's a disaster declaration, we don't have to go out to a competitive RFP to release those funds. Okay, so I'm at the request for proposal part. One of the really odd things about doing a consolidated plan is we have to put our first annual action plan, or how we're going to spend the money. We have to put it out before the consolidated plan's even fully drafted and before HUD's approved it. We put them out together. So as we're going through this and we're fine-tuning those priorities and we're fine-tuning those goals, we're actually releasing a CDBG RFP to fund for next, next year, so July 1 of 2025. That is why you will see a lot of the priorities listed in the RFP that goes out, because we haven't had that time to fine-tune and remove those that maybe don't need to be there. We're just putting out what the community identified and what's eligible for funding in this first round. That will be released on the 15th. We are keeping it open. That 60 days that we really prefer to give providers so that they have the time to plan the, the application process. We'll close at January 15. It's going to be available on our website on the 15th. We'll send that notification out to the RFP distribution list that we have. There will be a public posting in the spokesman as well in their legal section. That's a requirement from HUD, so you'll see that there as well. We are requiring technical assistance for all applicants this round. We believe that if they will talk to us upfront in that 60-day period of time, that we can actually help them identify some of the areas that have caused them to maybe miss points in previous rounds, to provide better applications going forward, more competitive applications. It is a competitive application process, so we want to provide as much support upfront to those applicants as we can. And we've noticed, which is not going to be a shock to anybody, a distinct difference between those applicants that seek technical assistance and, and their success and those that don't. So we just want to make sure that everybody has that opportunity. Okay, so this is a tough conversation. The city of Spokane, we have not met timeliness with our CDBG funds since, well, the last time we were timely was 2019. And so in 2020 and 2021, HUD gave all jurisdictions a waiver due to COVID because so many folks were not timely. And then in 22, 23, and 24, they started holding everybody accountable. It's serious now. And so we've had to create a work plan with HUD on how we will address timeliness, and we've had to take steps to actually follow through on that work plan. And part of that work plan is deobligating activities that showed no performance in the last year. And so that has happened. That was one of the items that was identified with HUD. We deobligated three non-performing contracts, and then we did have to issue last and final contract extensions for nine projects. I just want to make sure everybody's aware. The nine projects, some of them have been in progress since like 2021, 2022. These are not things, these are not short-term. They, we just had to get on it this time. Yeah.
What were the three that were deobligated?
So SNAP's Alexandria Apartments Rehab, VOAs Alexandria, oh my goodness, I'm not going to remember. It's the Alexandria House Rehab. And there was a, a youth shelter parking lot, I believe, something like that. I could have that one a little bit wrong, so please don't quote me on that one. But there had just been no progress in the time period, the contract term. Yeah.
Is there, well, I guess two questions. One is, are we trying to encourage sort of shovel-ready, if you will, types of projects? And then two, is there less to manage if it's in-house, like if we were supporting code enforcement, for example? Is there less to manage from your side?
No, there's not less to manage from our side. It's the same amount of management, yes, to the shovel-ready. That is actually something that we've been advised on, that the projects that came forward, they were very large projects, large budgets, and they tried, they, they gave us very small timelines that they were going to get it all done. They were construction projects, rehab, so they needed time. So now we are telling applicants, please adjust your scope and your budget to something that can be completed within 12 months. And we will stick with that 12 months on those rehab projects, those construction projects, facilities projects, until we have reached the 1.5 ratio that gets us out of timeliness trouble with HUD. Yeah. At that point, then we will consider shifting those contracts to 18 months, because it's always nice if if somebody has two summer, two construction seasons, right? And then quarterly reviews. So this is, we're doing quarterly reviews. Same things happening on the homeless services side. We're doing it on our side as well. It's just HUD's mandating it on our side. So we're meeting with our, our subs. We're going over their spending. We're going over their performance as of that quarter. And then it's written into their contracts now that two quarters of non-performance may result in a performance improvement plan. This is kind of new for the city to be maybe this harsh with subs. And so I wouldn't be surprised if we were to have some... And so I wouldn't be surprised if we were to have some pushback on that. But we are trying to be as open with our subs as we can be and as supportive as we can be as well. And then we did reprogram $1.7 million of our excess funds into a project that can move quite rapidly. And that was at, on the advice and guidance of HUD. And so that went into that expansion program of the single-family rehab program. And they're just pending environmental reviews on some of their projects. And then we should be able to spend a good chunk of that money even before probably March, April. And I believe that may be it. Do you all have any questions?
Any more? Any online? I have a question on, with us missing our timeliness in the last few years, what is the actual effect to the city in terms of, is there dollars that we've lost? Is there anything along those lines?
At this point, the effect is that we are on this workout plan and we are being held accountable, and we are holding subs accountable. If we fail to eventually get this timeliness down to the 1.5 ratio, yeah, they can potentially cut our funding. They probably wouldn't cut all of our funding, but they'd cut enough of it that we would feel it. And we don't want to do that because it doesn't just impact the projects that failed to meet performance requirements. It would impact our projects, like our public service projects, who always meet their performance requirements. So, it would have a community impact. So that's why we're doing everything HUD's telling us to do. We're working with our subs, and we're standing on top of this.
And would it be possible to get that correspondence with HUD? That, so that we can see as well, these are the things that we're asking of you? Is that possible?
The workout plan?
Yeah.
Or the work plan? I think so. Yeah.
Awesome. And a draft copy of the RFP, could you send that to us?
Yes. There's only a few edits left. So, that is our quarterly update, and we'll be coming back in January. So if there's, you know, any other questions or things that you'd like to hear more of, let me know. And we're happy to build that out. But that's all we have today, and now we can go trick-or-treat, maybe?
All right. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the Halloween.
Thanks. Bye.